Righto, well we'll keep going with the meeting, we just opened it and actually just adjourned straight away, so that's not on the video, but we now have the full complement and we can do the recording and video on that. Okay, so we've opened our special meeting, do we have anyone to move into closed?
You right?
Yep.
I'll move, Mr Mayor. In accordance with the provisions of section 254j 3 of the 5, C11, request for assessment of rate, review of rate assessment 15019995, C12, request for review of rate assessment 15020308, C13, request for review of rate assessment 1519987, C14, request for review of rate assessment 15020324, C15, request for review of rate assessment 15020191, C16, request for review of rate assessment 13010616, C17, request for review of rate assessment 15019417. That's it.
Okay, do we have a second up? councillor Guthrie, any opposition? We'll go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Okay, that's eight zero. And righto, so we're going to move on to what was first in the agenda.
Five point one.
Five point one.
Five point one.
In the white, white.
This one. Okay. Notice of a repeal or amendment of a resolution, item 5.1, do we have a mover? councillor McMullin.
Mr Mayor, I'll move. I'll move that, noting that there was an error in the meeting minutes record, that council amend resolution number 0M dash 06 dot 2022 dash 38, as stated, that council...
Can I ask a question, sorry councillor McMullin? Did we get this with five clear days' notice for the repeal or amendment?
Good question.
I'm going to say we didn't.
We may have to lay this on the table, it's five days, you're quite right, councillor.
Mr Mayor, I'll move we lay this on the table for a future meeting.
All those in favour?
Yes.
Eight zero. Okay, moving on to C1. C1, request for review of rate assessment. I'd like to move that council, that council, due to the change of property details resulting in loss of capping, in accordance with 120IC of the Local Government Regulation 2012, grant the rate payer, one, a concession of $1,346.60 for the period of 22nd of the 11th, 2021 to 31st of the 12th, 2021, two, a concession of $6,188.27 for the period from the 1st of the 1st, 2022 to 30th of the 6th, 2022. Do we have a second up? councillor Guthrie, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Eight zero. Okay, so we're moving on to C2.
Oh, Mr Mayor, I would like to advise that I have a conflict of interest that I've previously identified with relation to this assessment number.
Righto, thank you. And you've left the room before when it's been dealt with. C2, request for review of rate assessment 15020209. councillor Hancock.
I move that council, due to a change of property details resulting in the loss of capping, in accordance with 120IC Local Government Regulation 2012, grant the rate payer, one, a concession of $610.50 for the period 9th of the 12th, 2021 to 31st of the 12th, 2021, two, a concession of $4,884.52 for the period 1st of the 1st, 2022 to 30th of June, 2022.
We have a second up, councillor Tyler, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Seven zero. Item C3, request for review of rate assessment 15020274, do we have a mover? councillor McMullin.
Mr Mayor, I'll move that council, due to a change of property details, result in loss of capping, in accordance with 120IC Local Government Regulation 2012, grant the rate payer, one, a concession of $6,621.14 for the period of 17, 2021 to 31st, 12th, 2021, two, a concession of $8,352.7 for the period from 1st of the 1st, 2022 to the 30th of the 6th, 2022.
We have a second up? councillor Hancock, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Eight zero. C4, request for review of rate assessment 15020183, do we have a mover? councillor Taylor.
I want to move that council, due to the change of property details resulting in the loss of capping, in accordance with 120IC in brackets, Local Government Regulations 2012, grant the rate payer, one, a concession of $1,144.58 for the period of the 7th of the 10th, 21 to the 31st of the 12th, 21, two, a concession of $2,448.90 for the period of the 1st of the 1st, 2022 to the 30th of the 6th, 2022.
We have a second up?
Mr Mayor, if we're going, can I just ask to adjourn the meeting for a moment?
Yep, okay, we'll just adjourn for a moment. We're on C4, I believe we might have some declarations of conflicts, councillor O'Neill?
Yeah, thanks Mr Mayor, and thanks for adjourned the meeting to give some time to consider whether we in fact did have a conflict or not as individual councillors, but I'd like to declare it on C4, the description is request for review of rate assessment 1502020183. The declaring councillor is myself, councillor O'Neill, the person with interest is myself. The particulars of the interest are, one of the applicants is a contractor to Roma Rural Student Hostel Incorporated, of which I am an executive member of the committee, I believe it's a prescribed conflict of interest and I'll leave the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Okay, councillor Tyler.
I'd like to declare a conflict of interest in C4, request for review of rate assessment 1502020183, the declaring councillor is myself, Wendy Taylor, the person of interest is myself, the particulars of interest is, one of the applicants is a contractor to the Roma Rural Student Hostel Inc., of which I am an executive member of the committee, it's a prescribed conflict of interest and I'll leave the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Councillor Guthrie.
Mr Mayor, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest with regard to C4, request for review of rate assessment 15020183, the declaring councillor is myself, councillor Julie Guthrie, the person with the interest is myself, and the particular of the interest is that one of the applicants is a contractor to the Roma Rural Student Hostel Inc., of which I'm an executive member of the committee, it is a prescribed conflict of interest and I intend, my action is to leave the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Okay, we have three councillors left the room. Okay, we might start again, councillor McMullin?
I'll move that, due to a change of property details resulting in loss of capping, in accordance with 120IC Local Government Regulation 2012, grant the rate payer, one, a concession of $1,144.58 for the period of 07 of the 10th, 2021 to 31st of 12th, 2021, two, a concession of $2,448.90 for the period of 1st of the 1st, 2022 to 30th of the 6th, 2022.
We have a second up? councillor Hancock, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
No, they can't stay out, no, they've got to come back.
Five zero.
Well, they've got to come back in.
Yes.
Again and then go back out.
C5, page 52, request for review of rate assessment 15004997. Okay, do we have councillors? You've already declared these, haven't you?
It's not on this item though.
It's not on this item, right, okay, so we'll keep going. So, do we...
I'd like to declare a conflict of interest please on C5, which is, request for review of rate assessment 15004997, the declaring councillor is myself, councillor Julie Guthrie, the person with the interest is myself, the particulars of the interest is that one of the applicants is a contractor to the Roma Rural Student Hostel Inc., of which I am an executive member of the committee, it is a prescribed conflict of interest and the action that I will take will be to leave the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
I too will declare an interest on C5, request for review of rate assessment 15004997, the declaring councillor is councillor Cameron O'Neill, the person of interest is myself, the particulars of interest is, one of the applicants is a contractor to the Roma Rural Student Hostel Incorporated, of which I'm an executive member of the committee, type of conflict is a prescribed conflict of interest and the action is I'll leave the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
I have a conflict on C5 as well, request for review of rate assessment 15004997, the declaring councillor is myself, Wendy Taylor, the person of interest is myself, particulars of interest, one of the applicants is a contractor to the Roma Rural Student Hostel Inc., of which I am an executive member of the committee, the type of conflict is a prescribed conflict of interest and I'll leave the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
I'll move on that.
Just confirming, three councillors have left the room. councillor Ladbrook.
I'd like to move that council, in accordance with 120...
councillor Ladbrook, it's up on the screen.
Read off the screen mate. I'd like to move that, due to the change of property details resulting in a loss of capping, in accordance with 120, one in brackets, C in brackets, Local Government Regulation 2012, grant the rate payer, one, a concession of $1,445... No, read again. A concession of 1,000, isn't it? Concession of 1,145.13, didn't I say that?
Not yet.
Or the period of the 7th, the 10th, 2021 to the 31st of the 12th, 2021, and number two, a concession of $2,450.8 for a period of the 1st of the 1st, 22 to the 30th of the 6th, 2022.
Okay, do we have a second up? councillor Hancock, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Five zero. Item C6, request for review of rate assessment, I'd like to move that council, in accordance... no, actually, that council, due to a change of the property details resulting in loss of capping, in accordance with 120IC Local Government Regulation 2012, grant the rate payer, one, a concession of $39,912.24 for the period of 8th of the 7th, 2021 to 31st of the 12th, 2021, two, a concession of $41,829.87 for the period of the 1st of the 1st, 2022 to 30th of the 6th, 2022. We have a second up, councillor O'Neill, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Eight zero. C7, request for review of rate assessment 15019961, do we have a mover? councillor Taylor.
I'd like to move that council, due to a change of property details resulting in the loss of capping, in accordance with 21C in brackets, Local Government Regulation 2012, grant the rate payer, one, a concession of $393.24 for the period of the 16th of the 11th, 2021 to the 31st of the 12th, 2021, and two, a concession of $5,323.17 for the period of the 1st of the 1st, 2022 to the 30th of the 6th, 2022.
We have a second up? councillor Ladbrook, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Eight zero. C8, request for review of rate assessment 15020142, I would like to move that council, one, acknowledge resolution number OM slash O3022 slash 78 and grant a concession of $9,418.92 for the period of the 7th of the 12th, 2020 to 30th of the 6th, 2021, due to loss of capping, two, in accordance with 121C of the Local Government Regulation 2012 and 12.4, council's revenue statement 2021, grant the rate payer, a concession of $412.53 for the period of the 1st of the 7th, 2021 to 31st of the 12th, 2021, and B, a concession of $412.53 for the period from the 1st of the 1st, 2022 to 30th of the 6th, 2022. Do we have a second up? councillor McMullin, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Eight zero. Okay, moving on to page 95, C9, request for review of rate assessment, do we have a mover? councillor Taylor, councillor Hancock, sorry.
I move that council, due to a change of property details resulting in loss of capping, in accordance with 120IC Local Government Regulation 2012, grant the rate payer, one, a concession of $5,259.59 for the period of 1st July, 2021 to 31st of 12th, 2021, two, a concession of $5,259.59 for the period of 1st of the 1st, 2022 to 30th of 6th, 2022.
Okay, do we have a second up? councillor Taylor, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Okay, that's eight zero. Moving on to C10, page 107. C10, request for review of rate assessment 15020175. councillor Ladbrook.
I'd like to move that council, due to a change of property details resulting in loss of capping, in accordance with 1201C Local Government Regulation 2012, grant the rate payer, one, a concession of $41,710.33 for the period of the 7th of the 7th, 2021 to the 31st of the 12th, 2021, and two, a concession of $43,116.04 for the period of the 1st of the 1st, 22 to the 30th of the 6th, 2022.
Okay, do we have a second up? councillor Hancock, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
That's eight zero. Page 107.
117.
117, thank you. C11, request for review of rate assessment number 15019995, do we have a mover? councillor O'Neill.
I'll move that council, due to a change of property details resulting in loss of capping, in accordance with 1201C Local Government Regulation 2012, grant the rate payer, one, a concession of $2,473.41 for the period of the 17th, 11th, 2021 to the 31st of the 12th, 2021, and two, a concession of $10,114.23 for the period of 1st of the 1st, 2022 to the 30th of the 6th, 2022.
We have a second up, councillor McMullin, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Eight zero. Okay, C12, request for review of rate assessment, do we have a mover? councillor O'Neill.
I'll move that council, due to a change of property details resulting in loss of capping, in accordance with 1201C Local Government Regulation 2012, grant the rate payer, one, a concession of $4,950.72 for the period of the 17th, 11th, 2021 to the 31st of the 12th, 2021, and two, a concession of $20,244.36 for the period of the 1st of the 1st, 2022 to the 30th of the 6th, 2022.
We have a second up? councillor McMullin, any opposition? Anyone wish to speak? We'll go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Eight zero. Item C13, request for review of rate assessment number 15019987, do we have a mover? councillor Ladbrook.
I'd like to move that council, due to a change in property details resulting in a loss of capping, in accordance with 1201C Local Government Regulation 2012, grant the rate payer, number one, a concession of $1,811.33 for the period of 22nd of the 11th, 2021 to the 31st of the 12th, 2021, and two, a concession of $8,332.90 for the period of the 1st of the 1st, 22 to the 30th of the 6th, 2022.
We have a second up? councillor Guthrie, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We'll go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Eight zero.
It is page 146.
C14, request for review of rate assessment 15020324, do we have a mover? councillor Hancock.
I move that council, due to a change of property details resulting in the loss of capping, in accordance with 1201C Local Government Regulation 2012, grant the rate payer, one, a concession of $1,092.78 for the period 22nd of the 11th, 2021 to 31st of the 12th, 2021, two, a concession of $5,027.26 for the period of the 1st of the 1st, 2022 to 30th of June, 2022.
We have a second up? councillor Taylor, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Eight zero. C15, request for review of rate assessment 15020191, do we have a mover? councillor McMullin.
Mr Mayor, I'll move that council acknowledged resolution number OM dash 03 dot 2022 dash 78 and grant a concession of $401.91 for the period 23rd of the 12th, 2020 to 30th of the 6th, 2021, due to loss of capping, two, in accordance with 1201C Local Government Regulation 2012 and 12.4, council's revenue statement 2021/22, grant the rate payer a concession, C, a concession of $862.8 for the period of 1st of the 7th, 2021 to the 31st of 12th, 2022, and B, a concession of $862.8 for the period of the 1st of the 1st, 2022 to the 30th of the 6th, 2022.
We have a second up? councillor Guthrie, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We'll go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
That's eight zero.
Mr Mayor, can I just advise that I have a conflict of interest for C16 and C17? I've previously given details of that in reference to these two assessments.
Righto, I'll just call it. C16, request for review of rate assessment 13010616, so thank you councillor Guthrie. Do we, we'll just wait for councillor Guthrie to leave the room. Okay, do we have a mover? councillor Taylor.
I'd like to move that council, due to a change of property details resulting in the loss of capping, in accordance with 1201C Local Government Regulation 2012, grant the rate payer, one, a concession of $242.22 for the period of the 9th of the 12th, 2021 to the 31st of the 12th, 2021, two, a concession of $1,938.4 for the period of the 1st of the 1st, 2022 to the 30th of the 6th, 2022.
We have a second up? councillor Ladbrook, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Seven zero. C17, request for review of rate assessment 15019417, I would like to move...
No. She's got a conflict on both.
Or both, okay. I'd like to move that...
Our usual practice is that the councillor comes back, you call it, she declares conflicts and makes a deal.
Right, a good point, they might...
Yeah, but it's on each individual, that's what we did last time when these guys went.
But they were new conferences, conflicts, they hadn't declared them before.
Yeah. They're two different items anyway.
It's probably easier to be consistent throughout the meeting, understanding the argument on both sides.
So, we're just calling, C17, request for review of rate assessment 15019417, and councillor Guthrie's already declared on this seven years before, so you're leaving the room. Thank you. Okay, so I'd like to move that council acknowledged resolution number OM slash O8 dot 2021 slash 41 and grant a further concession of $947.76 for the period of 14th of the 9th, 2020 to 31st of the 12th, 2020, due to loss of capping, four, in accordance with 1201C Local Government Regulation 2012 and 12.4, council's revenue statement 2021/22, grant the rate payer a concession of $1,621.44 for the period of 1st of the 7th, 2021 to the 31st of the 12th, 2021, B, a concession of $1,621.44 for the period of the 1st of the 1st, 2022 to 30th of the 6th, 2022. for the period of the first of the first, twenty twenty-two, to thirtieth of the sixth, twenty twenty-two. We have a second up? councillor O'Neill, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to vote. All those in favour?
Yes.
Uh, that's seven zero. Okay, any further business, councillors? Okay, I'll close the meeting at four twenty P M and thank you for your assistance.